Filtering, whatever you call it.
Most frequently.
Good? Call the meeting in order. Everyone please rise and please leave.
Glad to lead you to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice in all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together to conduct the business of Orleans. We ask that you guide us in all of our decisions, and we ask all these things in your Son's name, Jesus. Amen. Welcome, everyone. Uh, gentlemen had the opportunity to read the minutes of our two meetings, August 21st and... Alright, that's been, uh, motion approved, seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Alright, do I need to suspend the meeting to have a public hearing? I'd like to suspend the meeting now. We'll have a public hearing for the town budget of 2026. Do I have any questions or comments on our budget, on our proposed budget for the coming year? If not, I guess I'll close that hearing. That's all I need to do, okay? You can reconvene. Well, reconvening. Uh, you want to go ahead and do the other public hearing now? Okay, I'll unconvene, and we'll have a public hearing for the Ocre grant.
Give me just a moment. I'm gonna go ahead and pass around the sign in key. Uh, because I do need everyone to sign in please, so if you haven't. Can I stretch that here? Turning on my recorder.
Talk while I get it on ours.
Absolutely. Good evening. My name is Jessica Condra, and I am the project administrator with the Indiana 15 Regional Planning Commission. Tonight's public hearing is to talk about the town's application for grant funding. Through the Office of Community and Rural Affairs, the town is requesting a grant for $750,000, which is the maximum that can be requested. The total match will be $879,113 and derived from local loans, bonds, and other funds as necessary, resulting in a project cost of $1,629,113. We are required to have two public hearings, one prior to the proposal being submitted, which is due October 24th, and the second prior to the application being submitted in December. These are head dollars through the Community Development Block Grant Fund. To get you familiar with the project, I will turn it over to Eric Parsley with Commonwealth.
Thank you. As Jessica said, I'm Eric Parsley with Commonwealth Engineers. I'll give a brief background and then describe what the proposed project is that is the subject of the application. So, the town of Orleans is, currently has an agreed order with IDM relative to operational issues and some affluent violations that had occurred years ago, and we continue to see a few affluent violations as we move forward, just periodically through, through the facility. The town did act on that, and they've hired Scott Chudy, Chudy Environmental, to help with operations. Operations are much, much better, more consistent at the plant now. Seen a dramatic increase there. It's allowed us then to focus more on are there any capital needs at the facility to assist with more consistent operations at the plant? We did determine that there, we did a study of the facility, developed a preliminary engineering report that evaluated various things. We did discover there's a few kind of end of life rehabilitation needs, relatively minor. There's some insulation that needs to be replaced around the pipes and some things, and some things like that. Operationally, we do have some issues with the return activated sludge pumps and the metering of that system, that it can be inconsistent at times, it can be work combined sometimes, other times it kind of gets out of, out of, out of whack, so there's some improvements that need to be done there. We do have a grit removal device at the plant that has been difficult to operate for years. It is not functional right now. That is currently on the list to be completely replaced. The reason I say currently is because we really don't think we need that system. We've got other things that can handle grit at the plant and protective devices that are out there, so we have that, that's included in the recommended project, that's the subject of the proposal. We are going to be asking IDM if we can remove that from the project. We don't think it's something that's necessary. We discussed that with Scott, and he's in agreement as well. So that may help out a little bit with the budget to do that. The big issue though is when we look at the data of the influent that's coming into the plant, we see that the plant flows are okay. Capacity wise, we look fine from a flow standpoint, but the organic loading is high. In other words, the wastewater is very concentrated that comes to that plant. There had been some investigative work to try to see if we can determine, is there a point source that's bringing that in? We have not been able to determine that there's any one thing that's, that's happening that's causing that to be the case. It's been consistent over the years of data that we've looked at over the past couple of years. We did change some things with operations around the December timeframe that we wanted to have some data to look at there. We've seen some of the peaks kind of go down when you look at the graph, but the averages are still higher basically than what the plant was designed to handle. So the purpose of the project really is to do improvements to the plant to handle higher organic loads. That is basically, our intent is to reutilize existing package, change the internals essentially to be able to modify the process to handle organics better. That's the, that's the biggest part of the, of the project, and that is really the heart of the need that's there. Any questions?
Can I please ask that for the purpose of my taking minutes, if you could just say your name prior to your statement, I would appreciate that.
My name is John Hopp with the members of the council. I'd like to... Let my mind here, what was on us? Oh, if the, uh, this egg washing plant would have to come online, would that aggravate the situation of, of the organic loads?
Yeah, so the egg washing plant, we've been in contact with them, they've provided some information, been very cooperative with us. One of the things we asked for was some sampling, some testing to be done. They've been able to take one sample, that sample does, is very high in organics, so that would affect what the recommendation would be for treatment of the plant. So, based on one data set, so I mean, they're, they're going to take some more data, they're going to look to see if there's things that they may do to be able to reduce that, but based on what we know now, global wise, we can handle it organically very, very high in organics.
My name's Randy Clark, I'm a council member. If we do this, does this get away from agreed order? I mean, is that completely throw that away, we don't have to worry about it anymore?
Yes, yes. So basically, what they will do is once the plant is, if we do this, once the operation is, is complete, then, then there is a demonstration period where we can't have any more affluent violations, and once you have successfully passed that demonstration period, then the agreed order will go back.
John, the only comment is that I've had some discussions with them about there, and they've insinuated that they would, might do pre-treaty, would that make any difference?
It would, it would help, it would help. Yes, absolutely would help.
Anybody have any questions?
Again, that's John Hopp, is there anything in there that we could, other than this grit removal system? That, that's pretty good chunk of money, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah, that was a significant part of the project, so. Yeah, and there's, there's a few other things I think that we'll look at. Scott and I had a few discussions about some things that maybe the town could do outside of the project, or kind of smaller, to try to help, help bring that cost down some.
Well, I know this is also supported by sur rates in total. As you know, we've already had one significant increase, looking at another maybe, so, for my part, I'd like to see us, I don't want to be tinsy on the thing, but we need to kind of watch our costs on it.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, and I think really, making sure we have processes in place to handle this organic load is, is the basic net of a need out there. So I think that's, we've, we've gone back to the vendors and our updating cost proposals as well at this point in time, so as we proceed through the application process, we'll have an update on, on that cost estimate too.
Could, could you repeat what the total cost of the project is?
Uh, the total cost is, it sits right now at $2.3 million, and then minus the, we get the $750,000 grant, so.
That has nothing to do with the grant itself, what, what we're going to do.
Right, right, right.
Well, this, this is really just the hearing to move forward with getting the grant.
Exactly, exactly.
I'll toss, toss in, I'm Scott Chudy, labor operator. Looking at the numbers that we get on the influent, we have pretty high BODs, high ammonia, which is the organic material primarily that we talked about here, you know? Other towns that I have worked with, generally you'll see that with a high residential, you don't have a whole lot of industrial water to kind of loop that down. And there of course, you also have bakery and other things that bring in additional organic loading. So, what we're looking at is trying to put things in place that are going to make it so that I don't have to worry about the system being overloaded and having to keep an eye on it every day, or say, okay, I gotta tweak here and there, just to stay in compliance, we get a little buffer built into this, so that, you know, those little variations don't cause a problem.
John Hopp again, well, do schools, without that significant amount of organic material?
Yeah, yeah, schools can, schools can be a pretty good contributor, to kind of have a consolidated, you know, group of people there, so, yeah, schools can be, especially relative to other things.
Probably the biggest concentration of people in one place. We did.
Yeah, yeah.
Even bigger than the factory.
And especially if you're bringing in, you know, a number of people that wouldn't, aren't normally in your system, you know, outside of the city, that's not currently served by sewer, so that's where you can kind of see that.
So, to follow up on John, this is Randy Clark. Is there a way that we could treat it at the schools, if they're, treat it there and then flush it in our system?
Not really, and it's not as, that's not as, as big a contributor than it would bring our overall number down.
Any more questions about the grant?
What we have to do today is listen.
I think that's it.
Listen, make comment. As we move forward, we posted online, and I sent out an email last Thursday about your survey to get the community feedback about the project. So far, one week out, we have had no responses. With Ocre and its competitiveness, community engagement is key. It is really, really important to getting this funded. So we need people to complete that survey, we need letters of support about the project, and I need feedback from individuals about the impact this will have on the community. So if this isn't...
Isn't it by email too?
Yes, email.
Cause I filled one out.
Did you fill out a physical copy survey, or one on the survey?
That is online.
If you do have some survey, you can turn it to my office, hard copies.
Okay, that's great. I told her that she could scan them in, I would manually input them all into the system for you.
What's the deadline for that?
I would like to have the surveys and the letters of support by October 13th. The proposal is due to Ocre on October 24th, so that gives me a week to incorporate that data into the narrative that I prepared, into the application data.
You know, input the standardized language that I'm going to get a book coming, I'm going to send you this week. And then I'm going to push it out through reach art, social media. And we put something on the water bills.
Yes, I included a QR code so people could scan it. There's a lot of different ways, and if anyone has questions, have them to reach out. I am available, so I can help them through that process.
Anything else?
That's it, did everyone sign in?
I'll close that public hearing and reconvene our regular meeting. Department of Public Health is not here. Hopefully if I had any questions about it before, or anyone else had to comment on.
This truck bid that he submitted to us, I think we need to make a better profit too. But I'm not sure. I notice one through all that stuff.
Yeah.
And it's got these upfit stuff in it, it's kind of special stuff like John Jones does up there, and I think John wants to discuss it, maybe others do, I don't know. But, but, every level.
Yeah. We like getting, get another quote with that one.
I don't know. Is a lot of people able to get the government discounts? They run low. At one time, I thought they said something about able to provide this government discounts.
That's how it goes, that they couldn't do the police parts, but we did. In the past, we've asked them to quote, and if they, you know, they couldn't, then they provide something that says no quote this time, so give them opportunity.
We've been, it's more of, in order to be compared apples and oranges, maybe walk out the lane with this, this specs over there.
Yeah. Anything else?
And I think we did adjust the public safety appropriations a little bit in the budget for a little bit.
Yeah. Okay, for the police department report, seems good. Any questions, anything you want like to add?
Just, we've been pretty active this past month. We have taken care of some complaints in the community referencing certain residences that they found to be a problem area for possible criminal activity. We've made a couple pretty good arrests, some of those places kind of shut down some of the traffic that's coming in outlets houses. Other than that, Officer Lundey is preparing for the academy entrance exam, which will take place in December, I believe, and I believe the academy is maybe January 5th. So right now, we're on pace with everything we can deal with.
I got a question, Jim.
Yes, sir.
You sent us some stuff here a while back about some sort of money available to dress up for SRO vehicles with, with planes or something, bulldogs.
I was, I was approached by the police department who was going through the process of needing a grant, and that grant was going to be countywide for all the SRO vehicles. And I explained to him as well as some of the other marshals in other communities that that was above our pay grade, made those decisions, we need to figure out through our councils. And hence the reason I sent the photographs out, to see if our council would agree with that image, or if they wanted to maintain more of a police image. And with that decision being made, I explained that the council was not keen on the idea of having it decorated to that extreme, just because out of concern that we'd use that vehicle for road use, and these were ready to identify it was a police vehicle. So they came back with a second offer of putting, I don't know the creed, SRO creed, but there's like three or four different statements. I guess that was on Kermit Farland's car when he was SRO, there was a small writing on the side of it, that I've asked them to give me a printout to show you what that one looked like, and where it'd be placed on the vehicle to support the SRO in their, in their...
Sure, we're still waiting on that.
Yes, sir.
I, I feel like that when it says Orleans Police Department, that in itself is a deterrent. And, you know, if you cover all that up, then it's, it's, it's not what the police, you know, just the car itself, I think.
And speaking to the superintendent of schools, that was, he wants to stay in line with the council's views, but his view also was, his biggest thing about having a police car sitting at the schools is, he wants it to be seen miles away that people approach. If they have an idea of entering the school improperly, they already see, well, there's a police officer present, and he don't want it to look like it's a window tanning van or something in the parking lot, and people might not even pay attention to that. I, I agree with that myself.
Well, I, I agree too, but a lot of getting around to Sunday afternoon at the courthouse celebration, there was a sheriff's truck there that had a big fancy thing about suicide on it and so forth. Was that part of the same program that you know, or you know Robert?
Yeah, it's, it's in the same line of that, yes, John.
Well, I was asked today if taxpayers had paid for that, or the other money.
I think it was some kind of other money.
I don't, I don't give a money, I put my mouth right in.
I think it was, it was still another grant, I'm not saying...
Okay, anything else? The water system, Daniel, looks like we're getting closer on our metering, that's good news.
Definitely.
Wastewater, got any more to add?
Well, from a standpoint of operations, things are going well. We finally got in our shearfin, so we were able to fix the primary. Things are running well out there, keeping up on solids and things, so, prepping for winter, pretty good, so. We'll start increasing the biosolids in the system here probably mid-October, so that it's...
Is winter a harder time on the SRO plant?
Yeah, what happens is, as the water temperature drops, the bacteria that we use to break down the ammonia and the organic material, they get a little sluggish. And so, and, you know, as that water temperature drops, they're less efficient, but we increase the volume of them, so they can keep up.
So the bugs get cold?
The bugs get cold, and they go to sleep. We don't, we try to keep them awake.
John, you got anything? Okay. Let's see, where we're at here? The, I don't want this ATP for the USI, that's an action to proceed, that's in order for you to prepare for them to do the application for the community cross-branching grant, and I'll bring that out and have you sign that before we leave. Okay, alright. And also, getting ready for the sidewalks, have you done some picking out?
Yeah. Yeah, it's kind of...
Can you send us a thing like you did last year?
Yeah, okay, yeah, I can get some.
I'll look at them. You got anything else?
Uh, the big tree at the park that was dying, it got a...
They did a nice job, they didn't tear anything up that side.
A lot of company as well.
Yeah, I've had a lot of people complain, and, you know, this, and once they find out it's dead, I, I, they're okay, it's just that everybody hates to see that tree go. Okay, the, Toby obviously is turning his recognition, do we want to advertise for the planning administrator?
I'd send, I'd send something around, a job description that we had prepared before, and ask everybody to look at that, and I know Johnny hired to comment, it was something you thought needed to be revised.
Changed on the advertisement for it, yeah.
Let's, let's study that a little bit longer.
Okay, did you see what, what the, the, what we had last time?
Yeah.
The ad?
He said it there.
Yeah, okay.
Well, it was a job description.
Well, it was also a, the advertisement we had last time. So you want to hold up on advertised for John? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, let's wait until October.
Okay, that's fine. You okay with that, Randy?
Yep.
Good.
Alright. John Paul, do you have any name on properties?
Uh, we had hearings yesterday, and, uh, Amy Mills, that we'd be sending somebody over from the town to look at, see if she's in compliance with yours. And then Scott Carr's property, he's got till the end of the month to clean it up, and then if not, we'll have the same order that we had on Ms. Mills, where we can go in there and clean it up.
Okay.
And then just a couple other, uh, people that have judgments, they're paying, so. And then I talked to Robert today, and, I mean, I guess we're just gonna have to file an ordinance violation on Gunther's house.
I think that's probably a little way ago.
We're not getting any, we're not getting any response from whoever's responsible for his estate, so. Robert, Robert indicated we need to get boarded up. Before somebody gets...
Should we just proceed with the ordinance violation then?
Then we go ahead and put, and why would we do that front window or something?
I told Robert, wait till we get a court order, that we'll get a court...
Any other open windows?
Yeah, that's there, and then about three, around that.
So I'll, I'll file it in an unsafe building, and then, once we get a court order, I wouldn't go on anybody's property till we get a court order, or do any work to anybody's property till we get a court order, and, and that, I'll ask the court to give us permission to board it up and at least make it where people can't get in it, so.
Alright. Old business.
Well, I want to go back just a little bit.
Okay.
Okay, cause, cause I'm unclear. Did the council ever prove the permits that the planning commission presented to them formally, so that, that we have, have that done?
The way I recall, we just, we left all the permits the way they were.
So there was no need for any action then?
Yeah.
This, is that right, John?
I don't think we, I mean, we discussed it, but we didn't take any action.
Yeah, I thought I was like...
No, it's part of the time, there, there are still what they were.
Okay.
We can spend some on now, don't trouble with the old work.
Me too, and that might be something if, when we get a new administrator, maybe.
Yeah, that would be...
There's something we need to look at, but, I mean, after looking at them, I don't recall there was a whole lot that was wrong with what we had, we just didn't know what they were.
Well, there's some things that I, I didn't like them being on, why should you, yeah, but how many of them have you told?
But, but the planning commission did, they did address that.
Right.
They did change that, and so that, that was their recommendation to this...
We still have that, yeah, too, okay. So maybe after we get somebody, then we can pull that back out, if that's okay. Maybe, alright?
Yeah, that's what I, yeah, I'm really...
Okay.
I didn't, you know, we shouldn't bring a new guy in and not tell him exactly...
Right, yeah, I agree.
What he's supposed to do, whether what's permitted and what's not, and that was kind of unclear to me, but I'm kind of like, oh, the rest of us were old, and we forget what we did, we, we don't have minutes to get over it.
Okay.
The other thing I have, I did prepare a grant with the foundation for Simmons and Tinkham grant, we, we got $5,000. I would like the council to approve that I can sign the grant. We could make a motion to that effect.
What, yours was, did you put down?
Uh, I've got benches, I've got landscape, and I've got security lines.
Is that for the?
Pickleball, pickleball.
I'll make most of that Randy view, power to sign the grant.
Alright, I'll agree with that, I'll second that. Although, if they're willing, Randy sign it for the grant, say aye?
Alright.
Aye, anybody opposed? Sign the grant!
Okay, thank you.
Alright.
That concrete slab reported there, is that just the stand in the objects observed, or what is that called? Just here close to take a picture?
There'll be, there'll be a marker there, it's got the donors, when we walk up to them, okay, who helped make that possible, and who helped pay for them, you know?
Our, our, they said that was the place to put it.
It was over there.
And then there'll be something there that will instruct people to know that that's a working mill, you know, it's, you need to be mindful.
Be walking around.
That there's going to be a lot of activity up there in the town, for safety reasons.
Okay, is there any liability? I mean, that's all part of property, is there parking, is there parking there or anything?
For us?
Not our property.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, I mean, didn't they go mad about something like, for weird at any time? I don't know, what is the agreement, was there ever an agreement done with them?
Well, we, we just had an agreement with the Spring Brothers Farms for use of the facility, but, you know, the stipulations that we also agreed to, knowing that that was an active and a working mill, you know, we need to be mindful of that, but, you know, we also instructed people, you know, they really want to stop parking our lot over our lot over there, you know, we have a section over there to park, you know, if you really want to get off to be safe about it. Because there's going to be times, you know, when all the grain stuff, business starts over there, that's really active over there, trucks.
Bushel.
Kind of a gold.
Yeah.
Helping our White Castle lot.
White Castle lot, yeah. Okay. Any other new business? So we got the AIM summit, French Lit, and that's just for information.
Should have all gotten an invite to our dinner, I hope.
Yes.
Tuesday night.
John's trying to do these claims checks.
We said Tuesday first night of the event, Tuesday night, and we moved it this year.
Look forward to it. Okay. Anybody else have?
We've got a couple of things there to approve on, I will give you that action to proceed.
Well, you need the sewer adjustment.
I don't see any of the claims.
I see the claims.
You don't have any sewer adjustments?
I'll make a motion to approve the claim.
A second.
All right. If anybody, sign the claim, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Sign the claims. We don't have any resolutions, do we?
No.
No resolutions? And sewer adjustment?
It'll be drained in the pool now, so it'll fill them.
They need to put it in our sewer system so we get more water.
Yeah. They'll lose it out.
As long as they neutralize the plumbing first.
Before they do that?
I might report to, although some of the token happening, so, well, first, the token board approved a $12.2 million water system upgrade or a water plant upgrade down there. Treat the plant coming to and board the contractor's design and do all the stuff that comes in and of course, getting it ready to help instead of, well, $12.2 includes the construction. But we still got the discussion, we had another, I was going to say, other state discussion about the mixed water bill.
Yeah.
And they're going to, in fact, they did approve a resolution that if they turn, if we, if they ask us to turn the water off or if we go to mix the water and our usage that month is below our minimum daily, which is, they're figuring it on a monthly basis and not a daily basis, which is about $6 million a month is our usage or minimum. If it's below that, we're getting credit for that, whatever that actually means. But they're not going to pay any money on the mixed water bill.
It doesn't happen very often, does it?
Well, yeah, sometimes less. Don't say anything because it will happen three times in two weeks.
I guess it was costing us too much money, we could just refuse to do it, right?
So we did.
Oh.
Well, we could, we could, but it didn't mention we didn't have any water.
Oh, I see. Okay.
That's the first thing that goes.
Oh, okay. So it does affect us.
Yeah, because then a fifth of them is that they don't have to really struggle to keep, take ten out on the hill and aren't paying full during the lease. And then that's the only time really that they're struggling to do that. But the year they leave it off for three days to avoid a boil advisory, so we're probably going to see some boil advisories in the future.
Do they have any sewer?
No sewer adjustments.
You're right, John, it did on the pools.
Thinking on John's part, if we get to that point, that's going to be a discussion that we're going to probably have to have too. Do we want to try and, you know, if we get in a situation where they want us to go on a boil advisory, do we want to do it or do we want to take the water off mix and pay the bill?
I don't know. I don't know. So if we're using the mixed water, then we don't have to do the world. I would say that would be the best way.
That's the way I would prefer it, you know.
That would be my preference, if we can keep the boil.
Do you boil water during a boil advisory? Do you boil water during a boil advisory?
I don't think we've ever had one, so I don't know. They don't have to make that choice. So I don't know if I have to make that choice yet, but I would prefer that you didn't have a boil advisory if we can keep them.
Okay. The way it'll hurt is, you know, like the gas machines, those kinds of stuff, restaurants and that.
Okay. Anything else?
I'm making both way to adjourn.
Second, that motion.
We had motion to adjourn and second, and all of the federal adjournments, say aye. Everybody opposed, adjourn. About that?
Yeah.
We're good. I'd like to something.
They're expecting 35 minutes.
Okay. Other things.
I guess we have a major building.
All right. We've got the kind of...
Every day a little bit for that.
I've got...
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 I've got...